Mr. Kimball, would you call the rule, please?
Certainly. Let's see. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Is here by acclamation. All right, would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is our adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Chair. Oh, I did just say, I just go water over the receipt too.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Unfavored? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right. We did have a, we had a change in our agenda that resulted in, okay, things being added. I see that we don't have anybody, we could move the public comment, but seeing no public to comment, I think we should proceed with our closed matter. Does anybody care to move us into closed? Do I have a motion to move us into closed?
Do I have to read something?
Yeah, there's a second from Ms. Ward.
You want me to read it out?
Yes, please.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular disciplining of a specific employee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, we will move into closed. All right, we're ready. Would somebody want to certify the closed meeting, please? Can I get a motion?
Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Kimball, would you call the rule?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we come to item four on the agenda, public comments requests. In accordance with our Bylaw 2.30, the time--
We did.
We did.
Oh, I was late, sorry.
Time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. We have one audience member and one comment. Ms. Kuchma, welcome.
She's already ready the mics.
There you go.
Nice chair.
It's got rollers on it.
I want to know if I get extra time because we had to wait in the hall. Just kidding. I just wanted to ask, as you move into the budget period, if maybe you could give some real thought to the process of transparency. Last year, as part of that process of the budget, the numbers got really tight and there was this long presentation by the principals, if I'm sure you all remember, where they're discussing how many copies they make because there had to be a presentation about the justification of $28,000. And this is the problem that the community has with understanding this process because recently there's been, I'm still looking into it, so I don't know, but I've, from conversations with people, there's, it looks like we have a new purchase of a bus, of a 10-passenger van that is a new acquisition. I don't know if we've leased it or bought it or whatever, but it's my understanding that the city, if our school district were to actually need a 10-person van for whatever reason, it never was discussed here and the city owns, I think they own 10-passenger vans, so for whatever that need is, couldn't we borrow it or lease it from ourselves? I mean, the left hand and the right hand, it's still me, I'm still paying. And so that has kind of cropped up, that it's there. And where did that money come from? Like, how does that money just appear? Like, what pocket? And so it makes me, as a taxpayer, feel like where's, this process just doesn't feel real because it seems more dog and pony. And so as you move forward, I will be asking questions, as I always have, just real justification for the cost. Like, because obviously line items are clearly padded because you can squeeze out a whole 10-person van from, I don't know. Anyway, so, thank you for your time and appreciate all your work. While I was sitting out there, you guys were sitting in here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public comments, we'll now go to item five. We have a personnel item. And do I have a motion?
I move the Falls Church City School Board move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for termination of a nonlicensed employee for the reasons stated in the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Kimball, would you call the rule?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item six, the first of what promises to be several, if not many, meetings regarding the budget. This is the first time in a long time that we do not have Dr. Jones present. We have Dr. Schiller, who has recently joined us, effective December 1st. And Dr. Schiller has a long history in many aspects of governance, both in a board capacity and in an operational superintendent capacity. And one of the things that he is asking us for is, what do we want in our budget? What guidance do we want to give him? And not just, what do the numbers look like? What should they look like? But how do we want to go about this? What is it that we would like him to see? He has met extensively with central office, as well as building leadership and professionals. And I think Mr. Kimball said, "We can do just about anything that you want, you just have to tell us what that is." And so the other thing that I think you will hear Dr. Schiller say repeatedly, it isn't a new statement, it's a reiteration of old principles, that this is not the superintendent's budget, it is the board's budget. And it has always been thus, but it is a chance for us to reaffirm that commitment and make it clear that this is a budget. We are the governing body and the superintendent will do as we ask him or her to do, but we need to make our desires clear. I think is the other thing that Dr. Schiller will tell us, and I don't want to do his presentation for him, but, you know, there's a great deal of our budget that is, as is the case with the federal government, not particularly discretionary. We are going to need a certain quantity of teachers, we're going to have utilities, we'll have various consumables and other things. But there are still priorities that we need to set. There's evaluation that we need to do on what is working, what's allocated, what needs to be reallocated, what are needs, what are wants. And also, in this environment, based on our meetings with the Budget and Finance Committee and with City Council as a whole, organic revenue growth is not going to keep pace with the demands that are being put on our system as a result of enrollment growth and various nondiscretionary cost increases, such that we are going to have to look very carefully at what our program is. The issue of class sizes is going to be top of mind. What we do and how we do it is probably not going to be able to be static and we need to be extremely clear in articulating to the community what the stakes are, what the trade-offs are, and what the challenges are, especially as we have not only operational budget challenges but capital budget challenges as well. And so with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Schiller. Take it away.
Mr. Castillo and Vice Chairman, Mr. Lawrence, members of the board, staff, and community visitors, good evening. It's my honor to serve as your interim superintendent and, yes, as we had discussed during the interview process, critical to the future is the development of fiscal year 18 budget, the extent to which I have engaged in a very deep dive into the current budget, as well as working, as we have for the last couple of weeks, with the city council and mayor and the city manager, and of course, working with our staff and talking with the staff. One of the things that I would like very much to do is, with your direction, is to assure that our community is fully educated and aware of all aspects of revenues, proposed expenditures, and to the extent to which that we have a budget with a go-forward process that is very open, although I don't like the word transparent, but we want to be able to assure the credibility of the budget that you will have in order to implement it. We're in a very interesting time in that you have an interim superintendent who will not be the one who is going to be administering the budget. You will probably have a permanent superintendent who is, may not have the opportunity to have input into the construction of the final budget and that it is truly belongs to you. What I'm seeking this evening, along with my able team members, is guidance from this board with regard to the go-forward process of its development and the extent to which how you want us to proceed, what type of data, what kind of consideration, and as importantly, how we can provide you with the kind of information and formatting that allow you to make difficult decisions. We stand ready to recommend. Our principals stand ready to be the turnkey communicators, as I've expressed to them, with our community. And as I explained to, who did I meet with today? Siak Peak?
Peak.
Peak, someone like that. Those leaders that, you know, tell me where to be in this community over the next couple of months and I will be there to talk to whomever in a formal or an informal setting to help folks have a comfort level with this board's process and proposed budget. So to that end, I guess my question for you is the process that you would feel most comfortable pursuing this year and over the next few weeks and months. For example, my experience has been that one can go forward with the board focusing on the policy and priority decision-making model. What are my priorities? What are the, what are the policies? What, how do we direct our limited expenditures? Or, to what extent do you want to do a zero-based budget, line by line, that's program-oriented, based on school, and so that you construct and your community understands where every dollar is going? Or based solely on working backwards, using the budget drivers, the anticipated revenue as the framework and to work through the very difficult process of, what can we afford within this? And making very difficult decisions accordingly. There are a number of ways. What we would like to do this evening, as we've, the three of us and others have worked on, is realizing that many of us have had a first look at some data, big picture, but not our community members. And so some of the things that we'd like to share with you tonight are for the optics of our community more so than you because you've, we've spent several hours last night. So perhaps we were prepared to go through some of the data and give you a little consideration to circle back, to give us direction of your comfort level of how to go forward with a process. So we might be able to begin with that. Let us do it. The first thing that we'd like to share with you all that you have seen, and it was emphasis, is the point that Mr. Castillo had made, is that as the community may or may not fully comprehend, that we're looking at fixed costs. Education system is labor-intensive. The reality is that 84.6% of this budget is consumed by salaries and benefits. Maintaining. Now, I would say, as you know, I've done a lot of this all over the nation and also as a consultant, helped school boards. And one of the things that I want you to share and understand is the fact that the percentages of your budget are what you're going to find whether you're in California or in Virginia or Louisiana or Michigan or wherever. You add to that the fact of purchased services that you have to deal with in order to preserve your ongoing operations. Well, now we're to look up to your discretionary area, which are really not discretionary. You've got less than 5%. And I think that's a very important point, to realize that we have commitments. So much so that, if you might go forward--
Oh, certainly.
Okay?
Yeah.
That I wanted everyone to be working from the perspective of what has been in the past, your fiscal year 13 budget and 14 budget and your 15 budget, your actuals in '16, what it is that this board and staff are working with this current fiscal year. And I think there are a number of different trends here that become very self-evident in terms of where and the spending has been and where the revenue has been by category. Because again, what we learn from the past, we project to the future. And for the most part, school district budgets are reasonably static unless you are undergoing significant change to your academic program or you're forced to reduce major line items, like personnel, or have to absorb greater costs in the case of, like, additional students. So for the most part, I think it's important to be able to see a trend line and the historical aspect of how money has been spent percentage-wise. Hunter, jump in, Lisa, please, anytime you want, please.
Absolutely. Sure.
I think this is an important graph that Hunter was able to put together for us.
Yeah. You've seen this before in current years, basically tracking our growth in student enrollment from base year of 2006, 2007 school year to the current school year. We're up 41% in terms of student numbers. In terms of the funding sources up to support that, they are up this year from the, from that base year. The spending overall per student is up 5% and the city's support on a per student basis is up 4%. You know, clearly, just as a reminder, that back in FY 11, 12, 13, our per student numbers funding had dropped significantly and we were facing challenges that year. You'd seen--
Question about that?
Yes, sir. Sure.
The numbers that you've got on the chart are the, against the prior fiscal year, right? And not as compared to FY 07 baseline?
They are compared to FY 07 baseline. So that basically from '07, we are now 41% higher in terms of students. The spending per student is 5% higher than it was in FY 07 and the city of transfer on a per student basis is 4% higher than it was in FY 07.
Adjusted for inflation or not?
No.
Real dollars?
Real dollars. Yes, sir.
Hunter?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, back again.
Yeah.
How hard would it be to track city population along with student enrollment? Just to show, I assume that we're growing a lot faster than city population.
That would be very easy to do, assuming I could get good numbers from the general government. I know that that's been a challenge in the past. I don't know--
Yeah, census data is going to be, it's going to be spottier.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be every year, but I think you'd be able to get it periodically enough to show the trend because I think what it's going to show is the city's population is going up and ours is going up at a much steeper curve.
Okay.
Look into that for us?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Make a note of that. Okay, great. You'd seen this last night, just to let, let you know the lay of the land in terms of our student numbers. This year, we're up 161 students from the same time last year and we had been projecting 25, 95, a 3.4% increase. We actually experienced a 6.4% increase. And so we're 75 students over projection at this point. In terms of class sizes, what that means, the school board's practice of staffing, 22 to 1 in grades K3 and then 24, no greater than 24 to 1 in the upper grades. There are three grades right now in the, in the elementary schools that exceed what our, what our historical policy practice has been, kindergarten, second, and fifth. In terms of-- Yeah, sure.
With respect to crystal ball gazing, I know it's almost impossible to predict where student growth will come in terms of where the distribution, but would it be possible to say what this chart would look like for fiscal year 17, 18 without--
We have that.
Okay.
We have that. We'll get to you on that.
Okay. You know, and speaking of which, in terms of FY 18, the upcoming fiscal year, everything on the left-hand side in the green and occasionally blue are our actual fall membership numbers. And then everything in the, in the orange moving forward are the projections that are provided to us this fall by Welton Cooper in Charlottesville. So we're looking at about 90 additional students next year. These are actually the numbers that Welton Cooper has projected on a per-grade level. And the assumption here is that we would add no additional classroom teachers. If we were to add no additional classroom teachers and shift it elementary staff around to stay compliant with the policy and the practice, where would we be? And kindergarten and 1 would be above, would look very much like they do currently, above 22. There would be classes of 23 and 24 in kindergarten and 22 and 23 in first grade. Also, if you look at all the other grades, second would be really, you would have one class of 21 and eight classes of 22 and the rest of them would range just barely below the maximum.
As a team, we have been meeting with each of the principals, looking at their requests, their needs, okay? And we're looking at it from not just delivery of program, but also what is the support allocation that would be needed? If we needed it, and can we accommodate in the elementary schools? Today, we met at the middle school and the high school. We're working only with K8 right now. We're not even dealing with pre-K or the high school for this purpose. But working on this assumption, I think you could see what, no additional staff, but I think if you go forward-- Okay. --what the class, what the policy would be, what our average class size would be if we were able to, as we worked with the principals at K8. Now, that does not represent all of the requests. We're going to have to speak to that.
And with the request, at this point, requests from all of the buildings as well as the directors, there is a 14.95 request for FTEs of teachers and that would be classroom teachers, content teachers at the high school, specialists, and special education teachers. In terms of support staff that's been requested, it's a 7.51 FTE for support staff and that would include paraprofessionals, office staff, custodial, or bus drivers. And then there's been a request for a 1.0 administrator, which would be an assistant director to special education. And those are based on enrollment and also programmatic needs and changes due to the level of curriculum that our students are taking as well as the planning factors that we use for Falls Church.
Going forward, as needed, our principals are ready to come forward to present to us, to you, their justification, the programmatic impact of what it is that's being requested and the flip side of it. If we are unable to meet that, what would that mean on the program? Okay, so, again, not to overload you now, but just want you to be aware of the fact that what we're looking at is, this board should be, and community should be extremely proud of an exceptional program that it's offering. Rich, diverse, strong. And again, I'll use as a point of comparison, one of the best programs that I have seen in my many years. And you have the results to demonstrate that it's being delivered so effectively by your staff and supported by your staff people. So the needs that the principals have, that you need to meet, what you want as a board to provide the absolute best education, services, and programs, okay, are greater than what you're looking at here. If we world enough time and money, we can do it. We have neither of both, so we could have some very difficult decisions. But from a policy perspective, that's what I'm talking about, that you would need to give us direction as we would lay out for you. And we will give you our priorities and the principals' priorities and what we think, and we will have to temper that with revenue.
Yeah. So with respect to the high school, I know the high school goes by per teacher or student load. How does that look in terms of load balancing?
Good.
Well, in many areas, for example, science, math, and world language, they're all over the 24 or 120 student, number of students on their caseload. And so those are the areas that the high school have requested additional staff to be able to offer class sizes that are appropriate.
And there are space limitations and physical limitations. Board member Reitinger and I spent a couple, two and a half hours going through each classrooms, boiler rooms today. And particularly, our attention lent itself because the principal there brought to our attention and I wanted to see it. We have fixed laboratory tables. And when you overlay that on the numbers of students who are in there and given the sciences are so important with the lab work and so forth, you have now programmatic implications when you have larger classes. Just as an example. So we will bring that forward to you as you direct us to give you the data and the information. What I want to hopefully be able to do, if you wish to do it, is to make sure that the voice of the principals representing their schools is unfiltered through us, that you're able to hear directly. And we will, of course, have some differences. I'll have the principals together with us--
Thursday.
Thursday. You know, with, I think it's healthy that we have diverse opinions shared, presented, so that no one feels as though that they're not representing their staff and their schools appropriately because we need to ride on the backs of their leadership.
We will also be bringing forward to you the impact of this past year that we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, what I wanted, what I asked Lisa and Hunter to do, and the principals, as we've met with them, is that last year you had to absorb a million-dollar cutback. Is that right?
912.
I'm sorry?
912, yeah.
I want to know, and I think you deserve to know in the community, what did that mean in terms of the delivery of the program and services this year? So that, you know, one's not crying wolf or one really understands how we've been able to absorb that and continue. So that'll be, I think, an important piece of data that you may want to know for reference point. Is that okay?
Okay, great. This is information that you saw last night in terms of what we're looking at, known fixed costs that we're going to have to address next year. These are in the areas of benefits. The VRS rate, you know, as we discussed, has, you know, has been accelerated as proposed by the governor. That could change either by him or the general, through general assembly action, but we will wait to see. Health insurance at this point-- Health insurance at this point, both the general government and, and the schools are at least, are using a preliminary estimate of 15% in terms of the increase. We're hoping that, that will come in at a, at a lower rate. That could change. The other items are pretty much known in terms of group life insurance, the city retirement rate, and we do, we will realize some significant savings from the retiree healthcare that we have to put into that trust fund. But what we're looking at is $890,000 right off, off the top.
Cement that number in your mind, okay? Because, give or take, a little bit of money in there until we get the final figures, that's non-negotiable, unless there's going to be a cutback in some areas. So $890,000 is what we're kind of putting aside as we must. And again, it may vary by a little, but that is a major, major driver to sustain just what we have now. Your other budget drivers?
Yes. Obviously, student enrollment growth, both staff and, and services, tuition and, and other services for students. Staff salaries, this is huge, big price tag. We, you know, the, the board's goal to provide and maintain competitive staff salaries. And also looking at classroom materials and supplies. I'm doing some, some more in-depth analysis in terms of, of the historic spending usage, not only on a system-wide level, but on an individual building level as well, that I will hopefully be able to share with you shortly. Speaking of salaries, this, big, big numbers here. In terms of budget planning, the cost of a step for all the staff is close to $1 million, $988,000. Even doing just a 1% adjustment is about $375,000. And to kind of put it in perspective with our primary funding source, which is the city transfer, those, those are the percentages on the city, increase in the city transfer and what they, what they translate to in terms of additional dollars.
I think these are critical numbers, again, to hardwire into your brain of what, if you wish to, and we have the resources to, and we want to, be able to compensate our administrators, and to keep the salary guys within the threshold of variance that you have established with your referent group of Arlington.
Well, that's, actually, my question is, are these numbers on top of finishing off the final tranche of our four-year catch-up plan? Or is that included?
These would be simply taking the salary scales that are in, are in place and, and manipulating those. I will let you know that I have worked with, with Lisa and others in terms of doing the comparison with Arlington, with our, with our professional staff. By and large, we are within the 3% to 5%. There would be some minor tweaking modifications necessary to maintain that at this point. And off the top of my head, I'm thinking it might be an additional $45,000, $45,000, $55,000 in order, for, for those particular adjustments.
Okay. Yeah, but we're not, so we're not talking about a fourth tranche, and then maybe a step on top of that, or 1% on top of that. That's my only point.
Just, I mean, just to be clear, if we were giving a teacher, teachers a step, which that is one of their budget requests, it would be 988, 200. And if you say 1% on top of that, that's another 374, so you'd be adding those numbers together.
Right, but that's separate from the catch-up plan.
Correct.
Right.
In addition to.
In addition to, so that step, is that covers everybody, everybody getting one step?
Yes.
Every, staff?
Yes.
Sport, professional, and administrative?
Yeah, and we broke it out by each group.
Mr. Rankuma.
This is in addition to the 890.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, and that is a critical point being made here. If we're doing our running total.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we do 890,000, step, 988, just stopping there. I've never been really good in math. Pushing 2 million.
Yep.
Okay?
But that's with zero headcount increase.
That's right.
That's right.
Yes. Correct. Okay. This is from the city, from the general government presentation last night, in an illustration of what a no, no tax change projection would look like for FY 18. You know, and just to let you know, that, that pay-as-you-go capital maintenance, that would be split between the schools and the city, but it would not impact our operating budget at all. That would be in the, in the capital budget. So once those items are taken off the top, there's about a 2.2% increase in funds for operations, and our 890 represents about 2.2% increase. And that would leave net funds available between the city and us of $234,000, which is about two teachers.
But the net funds available, is that, that's for us, that's for us to split, right?
Well, it, that was, that was not discussed. It's, these, these are the, these are the known increases right now, and given what we, we know is, we're projecting to come in of the, of the 1.8, 1.9 million dollars, if you take the known increases off the top, that leaves 234 remaining to work with, with, that's the organic growth with no tax increase.
But that's between the two of us?
Yes. Yes. Abs, yes. Yes, sir. Move on, please. Okay. In terms of looking forward on, on our side, and operating revenue, you know, we do focus on the city transfer, because that is 82, 83% of, of our revenue, huge. We do get other revenue sources, and at this point, what I'm aware of is we will be getting reduced federal funding, actually in the area of special ed. However, the fact that we do have increased student enrollments, both this year and next year, we can anticipate increased state funding and sales tax. At this point, given the, the budget tool and calculation that I have from the state, because, because FY 18 is the second year of a biennium, so, so they do, they do plan both. So I've, I've got good planning tools going forward, looking at about $416,000 at this point in state funds and sales tax. We'll have a much more solid number in mid-December, when the governor presents his, his recommended budget to the general assembly. And then, given our, our audit report, which came in showing fund balances, we will have an additional $110,000 to use as carryforward to support the budget. The assumption here is that, is that the 890 would, would come from, from the city council. All those revenue items together come out to 1.353 million dollars. Again, taking off what we know about, that would leave us, given all of our revenue sources, $463,000 to work with.
So for the mathematicians in the room, you can see what the dilemma is at this point in time with regard to our broad picture, big picture needs to sustain the program as we now know it, and what we are working with in terms of estimated revenue. Ladies and gentlemen, I did not want to overload you with charts and graphs and data. We have plenty of that. What we want now is, Mr. Chairman, turn it back to you, sir, the guidance from this board about how you would like for us to go forward and how you want us to prepare for the next budget session, where we have a, a presentation for January 10th on the budget or before. So again, I, we're seeking your guidance, and we're prepared to provide you with whatever you would like and need in order for you to make your decision-making. But most importantly, please consider how we would like to go forward and how I can best serve you in that way.
Thank you, Dr. Shor, yep.
Hunter, could you explain why we're losing the special ed funds?
I, I believe it, it has to do with, with sequestration and, and the machinations of, on Capitol Hill.
Yeah, the ESEA is so affected, and also, and IDEA, everything may be affected, and of course, the federal numbers are going to be somewhat in limbo for, until we see a new projected budget.
Okay. So the question is, how does this body want to build its budget? I think there is a lot to talk about in terms of what the growth pressures are, where the growth pressures are within the city, as between general government and the school system. We have the process of, I don't know about you all, I, I found it a taxing process over the last couple of years to go through things as much as we do. I think it's a good process from the standpoint of understanding the drivers and the breakdown of the process, but is there anything we'd want to do differently? Or is there a question as to how we want to present our information? So what are your thoughts about that? Mr. Reitinger, you seem to have a thought.
I made notes during the presentation. I've got some fairly specific ideas. And of course, these are just personal opinions. The first thing, and some, these are more process-based than they are substance, but I'd like to see at the very first budget to come out a, you know, a five-column spreadsheet, which is what used to be done, and we got later in the process last year, but I think we ought to start with this year, which is FY 16 actuals and budget, FY 17 year-to-date actuals versus budget, and then the proposed FY 18 budget, so that we can more readily examine where there's been historic deltas between expenditures and actual, and the budget. I'm very fond of a zero-based budget. One of the things that I said a lot last year, but we never got to, and I don't know if it's possible to get to, but to the extent we can roll up expenditures around programs, that's a very helpful thing to do, so that we could say, you know, this program costs this much money, so that we can, you know. I mean, we've got to the point where we're, I think the board, long before I came on board, is sort of salami slicing, you know, we cut a percent here, or 2% there, and you get to a point where, you know, there's no salami left. And so it's, you know, I think we've got to look at effectively whether the things we can continue to do or not do, rather than just trying to distribute costs around. I'm personally very interested in making sure that we stop undercounting our central and administrative costs. I think for very good reasons, we've always focused on teachers and teacher pay, and making sure we have enough teachers. And you can do that for so long, but it's like what the city has done with infrastructure. You know, eventually, you reach a point where you have one custodian, and, you know, he or she is responsible for keeping three buildings clean. It feels to me, based on what we've been talking about, that we're getting close to that point. And I, I think we've, you know, we may have to make compromises on teacher, on the amount of teachers that we'd like to have, to make sure we've got enough custodians and receptionists and the people who not, who make the buildings run, even if they're not, you know, on the front line of teaching students in a classroom. There are two specific areas that I'm particularly interested in seeing justifications around, neither of which I'm opposed to. One is technology. We are up for a renew of the Apple East, if that were to happen this year, and I know there's an ongoing working group that's looking at that. I will tell you frankly, at least in terms of the device discussions, my sense is it's been, there's, there is clearly a lot of support among the faculty for keeping Apple devices. That may very well be the right thing to do, but I'd rather not see a PowerPoint slide that says, "Why Apple." I'd rather see a cost analysis between the benefits and costs of, like, a Chromebook or other devices and those sorts of things. And the other issue we never were able to get to, it's not really my issue, I've been a big supporter of the IB program, but I think there are a lot of people in the community and some folks on the board who'd like to see what we expend on the IB program. I'm very, you know, I'm, so I'm, I don't know if I'm in the tank on the IB program, I very, am very positive on IB, but I think we owe it to people to tell them what we think it's costing us. And, I mean, really, because if there are things, you know, we often hear, well, if we weren't doing that under IB, we'd be doing it under something else, and I think that's true, but we still ought to know what all the costs are and what they would be, what the delta is. The most important point may be, I, I think we have to, and this is, relates to what the chairman said. So I, I thought the, the process was broken last year after we got to the point of what the city said, in the sense that I think we, we've got, going back and trying to fix the budget after the city tells us how much money we're going to get, and figuring out whether we need four copiers or three copies for the building, is not an effective use of the board's time, and I don't think is a particularly useful exercise. Although I took part avidly in it and spoke as much as anybody else. I think we need, you know, whether one is the formal budget we give to the city, I think we have to have two budgets at the end of this process that we give to the city. One is the guidance budget, and one is the what-we-think budget, what-we-think-we-need budget, not the gold-plated, you know, tub-in-every-bathroom budget, but, you know, what we think we need and what the, what we would do at guidance, so that the city council can actually see, you know, if you give us the guidance, this is what you get. This is what class sizes look like, this is what the school program looks like, and I think that will enable them to make an effective political decision and weigh where the dollars ought to go. And I don't, I think if we don't do that, then we set us, ourselves up for the argument that we are, have an inflated budget, that we have not cut enough, all of those sorts of things. And I think we need to stick to our guns, and if the city gives us guidance, then we do the guidance budget. I don't, I don't want to do a Washington Monument budget. I want to say, if the city council passes this budget, this is what will be. And the last thing, because I've talked long enough, is I'd like to make sure that we don't, by, because we're starting the process earlier this year, get past the point where we can't consider other revenue enhancements because of the time in the year. And what I'm thinking of particularly last year was there was some discussion about whether the tuition at Jesse Thackeray preschool for the non-special need students ought to be adjusted upward, but the, but the amount had already been given to the future parents, and they'd make commitments on it for the, the parents of future students. So I would like to, early in the process, ensure that we've taken a look at any place where we can squeeze out more money. That's it for me. Thank you.
So, I was just thinking, as you're, as we're talking about, how do we want to craft this budget, what do we want to consider? What I'd really like to do this year, in addition to everything Mr. Reitinger just said, which I agree with what he said as well, before we make a decision in terms of do we want to, do we need to raise class sizes, and instead of hiring more teachers we put in for a step, I'd like to find out what the teachers and the administrators and the staff think is their priority, which would they rather have, 24 students in a kindergarten class or an extra bit of pay? And I, you know, just to like honestly ask them, which would you rather have? Because we're facing a stark reality that I don't think you're going to get both this year. So what would you rather see? And then all, you know, and then overlay that, what's best, what do we think that is best for the students and what's our policy? But I'd like to have that really clear input, that, that there are going to be hard choices to be made here, and we can't say, what would you like? I want more pay and smaller class sizes. You can't get, you probably aren't going to get both. So if you had to choose, which, what's more important to you? And then also, hopefully, ask the community, too, what do you, what's more important to you? And it is, you know, and these are all, these are all tough decisions. None of them are easy, and none of it's cut and dry, and like, you know, if I'm a teacher asking this question of myself, you know, it's, it's a really hard choice.
That's what I was alluding to earlier on about policy priority decisions that ultimately the board will have to grapple with, with the input of, from many.
Yeah, thank you. I think that will be helpful, but helpful.
Yeah. Might be butter or guns.
Yeah.
Mr. Rankuma.
Listen to my two esteemed colleagues, and yes, they make some valid points. I would just sort of piggyback on them and ask to Mr. Reitinger's point. I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but two budgets, the city council asking them to, you know, are we getting into the area of letting them determine how we spend our money? Or I would, I would just be concerned about what actually gets out there. I don't know how condensed it has to be, because then we're a sort of, I don't know, asking them to tell us how to spend our money. But that would, that would just be something I would want to go against. We usually approve a number. We usually approve a number or not, but, you know, to actually sort of break it down for them and have them get into it would concern me a little bit. But maybe we don't get to that level of detail. And then to Ms. Gill's point, I mean, and Dr. Schiller, you've been around, I mean, with these increases, are we actually bumping against physical constraints? You know, forget the numbers, I was like, could you fit a certain number of desks into a classroom?
Yes, sir, and that's why we have personally been going to the schools, because I need to see and feel, and what does it mean? And yes, maybe we, maybe we need two more teachers to save the class size at XYZ School. But what is the ripple effect? What is the cost of an additional room if we don't have a room to bring it? Okay. Or if you then repurpose areas that are currently used, what impact does that have on the students and the teacher and the program? So yes, sir, I think that's data that we have started to work on very deeply, and I've charged Lisa to working with the principals, that we can have all of that available to you, because those are going to be critical decisions. Yes, we would like for the class size policy and to adhere to it, and for the teachers and the students' benefit a certain, but if we cannot physically make that happen, or if we put another group at disadvantage because of that, and the program is compromised, no, sir, we cannot, I could not recommend that in those cases. Our principals, I have responded quite understandably and positively to this kind of approach, and so much so that I'm very impressed with the leadership that you have at the schools in terms of their maturity and recognizing to look at their school program holistically. And I'm going to rely heavily on their judgment along those lines.
I am, would like to add something. Thank you, Dr. Schiller. The biggest part of the budget, obviously, are the salaries. I wonder if there's a way to break that out, just the salary portion, and show what it's like, you know, in conjunction with the class sizes? So if we don't increase teachers, what we would be paying and what the class sizes would look like if we do add a teacher? And what, is it possible for some of these lower grades, if we can't add a teacher to possibly add another IA to the classroom, which is a less expensive option, yet there's another adult in the room, without having to break out a whole entire, another classroom? Yeah. And maybe even a shared IA between two rooms, something, I don't, I don't know what the possible options are, but I know it's a less expensive option, and it may do the trick as far as, like, having bigger classrooms and all the children having enough attention paid to them. So, yeah, does that make sense?
Yes.
To you, what I'm looking for?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Oh, also, one other, sorry, if we do add, if we, we feel like we need to add teachers, can we determine if there are actual available classrooms at the locations and what?
Dr. Schiller's already working on that.
Okay, okay, I think you might have mentioned that, I'm sorry, from my list, I guess you addressed it before I asked. Thank you.
Yeah. For me, I actually agree with Mr. Riedinger of looking at the, the guidance and a what-we-need budget. I don't necessarily know of presenting, but I think we probably need to provide that type of information for, for the families here who have kids in the system to truly see what a budget looks like, if, depending upon what the guidance ultimately is from this, from the general government is, and if that's where we are instructed to go, versus a budget that actually, no, as in federal terms, using the gold-plated restrooms budget of just getting the sky's limit, but just what we need, materials, those type of things, what that looks like of just to kind of continuing the excellence that we already provide. I think both of those need to be seen, because we do, I think, sometimes get the hit of we're inflating our budget, and I honestly, over the years I've been on the board, I don't think that's, we've not done that, but we do sometimes get that, get that, that hit against us. So by providing those two options out there and hearing from, and from our parents as well as our, from the citizens, as well as our, our staff, because I kind of have a, where we're, I can't, with Ms. Gill was saying of asking them to choose either or, have a sneaking suspicion of where one side may, may go. I think ultimately, deep in their heart, they, they want to keep the small class size because they see the benefits of that for conducive education for our students, but they also have to look at where they are living in this region, too, of making sure that they are taking that into their considerations as well. So I think we need to have that conversation with them and involve them, and I'm happy to hear that you all are involving them way earlier in the process than I think what we have before, and getting that information early, so that as we build the budget, we can, can have that information, and, and they can feel that they've at least been heard. And then we'll hear directly from them when we go into the building ourselves, as we yearly regularly do, and hopefully, excuse me, that we'll see more of those teachers and administrators and support staff folks coming to those to actually, so we can hear directly from them.
Mr. Lawrence.
Just a few things. First, Phil, when you say a guidance budget, you mean if the council says you should only increase 2.2%, what a budget would be if we only increased 2.2% as opposed to whatever we think is deserved? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I come down with you, Michael, with concern about then we're letting the council make our decisions on how we spend our money. My bigger concern is between the time we send them that, and they kick out their final budget, we're going to be hearing from a lot of people, and our decision about what it would be if we follow their guidance might well change. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't lock ourselves in. I mean, I think their guidance is going to be so small, it's, it's almost going to be a bit comical to, to show what we would do, but, I mean, I understand the point. One thing I got to tell you, I don't think zero-based budgeting is a good idea for schools. I just, to me, zero-based budgeting is based on the assumption that pretty much anything can be done away with if you don't have a good justification for it, you just don't keep continuing it year after year. We don't have that. I mean, we have 2,700 kids. We have to educate them, they're in certain grades, they're certain numbers, you have to have a certain number of teachers, we have policies. I mean, to me, 85% of our budget is not, has no ability to be zero-based, because it's got to be there because the kids are there, and so the salary has to be there. So to me, zero-based just doesn't really work for schools. And on the idea of asking teachers whether they want salary increases or smaller class size, we did that a few years ago. And Lisa, I don't know if you think their response would be categorized as angry or just, yeah.
And that's actually what I just witnessed with Hunter.
The answer was.
They really don't want to choose.
They were very angry. I mean, their attitude was, "Do not ask us that. That is not our job. We want both, but do not try to make us choose." I mean, anger was something you don't normally see from, you know, I was the representative to peak at the time, and they were, they really felt like we were trying to make them make the hard decisions rather than doing it ourselves. So we could try it again, and maybe people have changed, but, I mean, teachers were really angry that we even asked.
It's like asking, it's like asking which of your children you are.
I think giving guidance from them, I mean, I'd like to know.
It is. I mean, maybe we just ask because if they want to.
Yeah. I can't, I mean, I know it's a hard choice, but it's a hard choice, and I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to make that choice for them without knowing what is really the priority, what is your priority when it comes down to, like, which one's the shove?
If you don't have input, yeah, but, I mean.
Why don't we give them the option of saying, "I don't want to make that decision. I want this, I want that," or, "I don't want to be involved."
Here, I mean, I want you to, I want you to pick for each.
All, all three options, and that way they can opt out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, the, it was basically, I think it was Mount Daniel where, you know, a large part just boycotted even responding, because they did not want to have anything to do with it. So I'm just saying, historically, we tried that, and it went over like a lead balloon.
No, we're trying to do the right thing, we just want to get, you know.
Yeah, I know, no, we need to, we need to, we need to ask them, just knowing, you know, what it's been in the past. We need to ask parents, especially since they're going to be paying, you know, if they say they want both, honestly, they're the ones who are going to be paying, mostly not the teachers.
Well, yeah, you got to get the money tomorrow.
Ms. Rankuma.
No, you have to speak, don't you? Just a quick response, I wanted to make clear that I like Phil's idea of sharing more the effects of the two budgets rather than the detail. I just wanted to be careful what we presented, but if we're going to present two scenari, let's call them scenarios, this is general government, if we go with this scenario, we're going to get 28 kids in a classroom, this is what we're going to get, versus this is what we really need to be able to maintain what we have. So I just want to lay that out. And on the programs, I have, again, Phil mentioned it, but I have a different way of looking at it in terms of if we can, if we can identify the programs and what they call them by programs, I mean, is it the sports programs, is it the English programs, is it the IB programs, is it, you know, those individual items? I think it will help us, because I've also wanted this, to figure out what we're offering, the different things we're offering, what we, what is, what is, what is required, and maybe the, I don't want to call them wants, but how much of the not mandated ones are sustainable? Because we are a small school system, and sometimes I think it's worth the review to see, all right, we're stretching to do, I don't know, I'm just using an example, hybrid, or we're stretching to do this, or we're stretching to do this, but can we keep doing this on a strict budget? Or do we cut it off and say, we're either going to do some things and do them well, and not touch these other things at all? And just acknowledge that. We can't afford to be all things to all men, given our size. I mean, I've been around here, and these may look petty, but in the, in the 12 years I've been in the city, the last three years, the kids haven't gone on exchange programs, something that used to enhance their learning experience. All-night grad has been cut from, you run these kids through the school that's falling apart, and then when they graduate, you have the party in the same school. You know, we used to send them to this sports complex, at least they could get out and have that, you know, I mean, that for me is something that, maybe we should revisit. I know budgets are tight, but, you know, after, after high school experience, when, you know, when it rains and you need buckets and trashcans around this, that's not a nice way to, that's a last impression you leave over there. And another one of mine, and I guess it's down to budgets, but I think we used to have three assistant superintendents, now we have two, you know, for, you know, with a growing school system. I mean, these are the kinds of things that erode, for me, erode that quality, and I don't know, I'll be the first to ask for them or to keep those in mind, because if we keep our quiescent to these cuts, very soon, the program will not be what we think it is. Just putting that out there, so.
There's a lot to think about. One of the things is that, you know, to Ms. Gill's point, the whole of asking, do you, which trade-off would you like to make, while frustrating is, is a reality, I think it's worth asking that question. I also think it's worth asking questions of the parents and taxpayers about what they would like. I'm not sure you'll see alignment, and I think it's important to understand both sides of that. With respect to engagement of, for example, the PTAs, one of the things Dr. Jones did last year, and I think she found it useful, was she actually presented the budget to the PTAs before she presented it to us. And I think engaging and explaining to the SAOs and the PTAs about what's going on with this budget and engaging them is going to be extremely important. With respect to these, this, this gold-plated terminology, I think we need to fight that. I don't think we have a gold-plated school district. I have not seen the gold-plated faucets in George Mason High School. If, if they're there, we need to melt them down immediately and fix our roof. And so I think that's, you know, if anything, I think we need to make very clear to the community that the budgetary pressures on the school division are growing in excess of an order of magnitude faster than they are for general government. I look forward to the day when general government's budget receives the scrutiny that ours does. Mr. Riedinger has scrutinized various administrative and support offices and found that there is ample support over and above what we enjoy. Dr. Schiller does not have a secretary, the city manager does. The computer and communications department is staffed at multiples of what ours is, and I think we need to have a serious conversation. I think if you look at the rigor with which we scrutinize our budget versus the process that goes on in general government, I think there could be lessons in both directions. And I look forward to having a city-wide, and I mean general government plus schools, revisiting of what our priorities are. As we look through our budgets, I think we need to do so through the lens of the work plan and policies that we've established. I don't think, we cannot undo our work plan and our policies in our budget, we have to fulfill them. A huge thing, a huge component of that is continuity, both in terms of curriculum and in terms of other things. With respect to technology, I think there would be immense costs to having a hybrid Chrome/Able environment in terms of support, security, and other things. Teachers have said continuity in the technology environment is important, tech continuity in the curricular environment is important, and I think that's why division-wide IB is of such importance and value. And I think as we make our budget decisions, we need to do it with an eye to that continuity and to our work plan and the priorities that we have set out. And similarly, when we revisit our work plan and our priorities in the summer, we need to think about the budgetary impacts, because ideally, you'd want to do them at the same time, and that's, that's not how, that's not how it should be. With respect to Mr. Riedinger's two budgets, I think two years ago, we did lay out what a nominal budget would look like, and then departed from that, explaining why that was not sustainable. As I understand the charter, the city manager has to present our budget to the city council on or about March 13th, and I think that's what we got to propose. I think we need to be very clear to general government what we're recommending and what we're proposing and why, and I think we can do so in the context of why the nominal budget amount doesn't work. But I don't think we can go much farther than that, I could be wrong. But I think conceptually, as a way of explaining, you know, we're not flouting the budget organic state, we're simply saying that, you know, if we could decree that school enrollment would not increase, then we could adhere to this, this construct, which it really is a construct of there is no tax increase, you know, there is, there is assessment growth, this is a budget that is increasing, there is a tax increase in the sense that your assessed value is rising, and so your taxes are going up. So to some extent, I think we just need to be a little more practical and say, we have various fundraising mechanisms, they're throwing off this amount of money now, our needs are changing, what are the consequences? And not, I, I think it's a, it's a bit of a shibboleth to talk about a flat budget. With respect to central office and non-classroom activities, I think Mr. Riedinger is right that those have taken unjustified hits of late, both by omission and by actual cuts. I think we do further work there at our peril, and if we're concerned about parity of teacher pay with our neighbors, I think we should do so as well with our building leadership, because we have great, great leadership there, and we don't want to lose it. I think, you know, another, another issue that we should be mindful of is the long term. Some of the plans that would keep us close to, sailing a bit closer to the wind in terms of staff increases, will have downstream effects, because if you look at those numbers, you know, you were at policy for almost every single grade, which means in the coming year, there will be a reckoning. there will be a reckoning. And given the fact that we have sort of a stair-step syndrome, we need to message to the community that perhaps it may be better to smooth that out and, and do a more orderly hiring process, because otherwise, you're simply kicking the can down the road. I think that, as a final matter, with respect to Dr. Schiller's idea about buildings, to some extent, I think we should require the buildings to operate within their budgetary envelope. I've seen proposals in certain schools, well, let's just get rid of the technology budget and hire three, three teachers for our school. It doesn't work that way. I mean, if you, if you have a technology allocation by building, and everybody's in agreement that you should depart from that, well, you could get your cash equivalent of that, but you don't get the whole program. And I think one of the challenges that we're going to have, and you see it often, is everybody wants everything. They don't say what they want to throw overboard as part of the process. And I think as we move through this process, we really should demand from the community, from parents, from teachers, professionals, administrators, that they take a holistic view. We've had a discussion of what kind of tools we could use that may, might help advance that. I think any tools that we would use there would have to be constrained by policy and curriculum. But I think one of the things I think we need to do is have as much of a conversation as possible about what we're doing, why we're doing it, as we go through the process, so that the budget doesn't just hit the desks of people in general government, and it's then worked on. So I think we should have a lot of communication about what we're doing, why we're doing it. We have a constitutional obligation to give our children a high-quality education at no cost. Unfortunately, that, that group of children just grew by 6%. And it's going to grow again, and there's nothing we can do about that. But we do have our obligations to discharge, so. I wish I got paid by the word, like I do in my day job. Okay. Anything else? Do you feel you have the guidance that you need? One of the things that I don't feel you have guidance, and Mr. Reitinger has a, has a, there is a physical question, the physical output is a huge question. What does it look like? How usable is it? How is it formatted? How is it paginated? All that stuff. What is the user-friendly working tool that, that provides visibility to what's going on? There are many tools. There are many approaches. I don't know if you really have been given guidance on that piece, and that's, that's an essential one. So I don't know if we want to revisit that and talk a little bit more and build on, you know, some of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Reitinger.
I've really appreciated hearing individual board members articulate certain needs, certain perceptions, certain ways to move, certain data points. That has, you know, helped me. I'm sure staff may have heard some of this before. But I'll go back to my original point. Our go-forward, the process that you would feel comfortable with, I believe on January 10th, is the time by which we need to present something to you. And I hear that you would like for us to gather as much input from as many constituencies and people that we possibly can upstream. I, I, I thought I heard here, Mr. Castillo, the, the, a leaning toward understanding, much like you had said, from a program-oriented center of what is it, what we are doing, why are we doing it, and what does it cost by our kindergarten program, our IB program, whatever. Before I go on, Hunter, Lisa, please, you know, you own this as well. What more do you need to hear of what's being said in terms for us to go forward of a process?
I will say that, for example, what Mr. Reitinger had requested in terms of, you know, a budget format, that is the base format with, with, from which other formats come. So that is no problem whatsoever. In fact, that's the first thing we do. And are, and are in fact looking at those sorts of things in prior experience in terms of trying to project forward. So that, that's not an issue at all. That, that would be a given. The question, I'm, I'm just trying to project forward in terms of piecing this together. And as Dr. Schiller, you know, has pointed out, you know, historically, you know, the superintendent has come forward with a, with a recommended budget, and then the board looks at it and tweaks it and adds and deletes and analyzes and things like that. I believe Dr. Schiller's goal here and intent, you know, given our unique situation, especially at this time, is that really, from the starting line, this needs to be the board's, the board's budget. And therefore, whatever is presented, whether it's one budget or two budgets, on January the 10th, really needs to reflect the board's priorities, you know, programmatically, you know. And, and the fact of the matter is, and I will say it, that, you know, politically, the board has got to work with, with our counterparts, the city council, because ultimately, they're the ones who are, who are going, going to fund this and, you know, and, and see worth in it. And I do know that, that we, you know, we are looking at operations versus capital, and there's, there's a lot, you know, and there's a lot of, of stress between, you know, those two items. So I, I think this was very good, what, what we, what we received. In terms of putting together a budget which, which, you know, reflects the board's priorities and, and board ownership, I'm not sure I have enough information right now to, to really do that. But again, that's what January and February, you know, are for.
And I, on this point, I, I think I agree with our chairman, that it's, it's kind of hard to go through and do a, a full discussion of priorities. We kind of did that, and we've got a priorities and work plan document. And, you know, I, I would use that. And I say that as the only member of the school board who voted against the priorities and work plan document. But it seems to me that that was the decision of the board, and that's, I, I don't know that you'll, you'll get a whole lot more than that unless there are specific areas that we could provide additional guidance on.
Question for the school board. If we look at the priorities and the program documents, you know, take into consideration everything we've heard tonight, and, you know, and I'm making this up, okay? And we, on January the 10th, we present a recommended budget that has a 6% increase in city appropriation, okay? Is that dead on arrival? I mean, do you, do, do you want to put parameters around this? Do you, you know, do you want to put ceilings or, you know, because certainly, we don't want to put the board in a, you know, in a very, you know, difficult position of, you know, do we, do we put you in a position of adding things in, taking things out, or, I think you know where I'm, where I'm going with this.
Well, I think one of the things that Mr. Reitinger points out is, you know, we have stated what our priorities are. I, I think another good place to start is, you know, looking at last year's budget. I think that, that is a, that's a good foundation. One of the things I would also say is, January 10th is the first cut at what the board's budget would be. But I don't think you have to have the as-built construction documents. You know, this is going to be a rough design sketch, and we will use that as a point of departure for finishing it. Other thoughts?
Just on the question of, do, do we want to put bookends or, or limits on some way? I don't want to, simply because I want to know honestly, what would be needed to fund the priorities that we've set forward. I think saying, oh, let's arbitrarily say, don't go over 6%, I mean, to me, that's sort of like teaching to the test. It's not saying, what did the kids learn? It's saying, what do they need to, to pass the SOL? So, I mean, you're not going to come in with a 25% increase. I know that. You're not going to come in with a 1% increase either. You're going to come in with something that you think is justifiable and does what we need, how we need to do it. And then we'll take, we'll take that and then mesh in the politics, which is, okay, if you want 14%, you're not going to get 14%. Then where do we get down to something that's more reasonable? But no, I mean, you're, you're the experts on what's needed, and I want to hear your honest opinion.
I, I really liked the way you said that. And, and I, I'd like to see that as well. I'd like to see a budget that maintains our standards, our policies, and, and start there, instead of starting out low and going lower. And, and because at some point, we're going to be chipping away at the quality of education we're providing our, our, our children in this community. And, and I don't want to start from that vantage point. I want to start from the ideal vantage point. We can go from there, and at that point, we get the input from parents and teachers and other stakeholders who can tell us whatever they, what they would like to see cut.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Other thoughts?
Just in terms of format, was it last year or the year? I think it might have been the year before, when you had it, you had a binder that, as Dr. Schiller mentioned, you've got the, you had Jessie Tack, where you had the individual schools, and each one, so you could ident, you could pick TJ and say, here's what it costs around TJ. You know, is that the format you'll be presenting?
Yes. We, we, in our finance system, we have, we have it set up by location, so we can pull location budgets.
Okay. I found it user-friendly.
Presented that way.
The staff, the leadership, all of that by, by chapter, or, you know, it was a very, for me, I thought it was a very easy way to read it, but then.
So you were talking about more the word, probably not the number.
The words, the words were there, but it also had numbers behind it. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an attempt to run away from the numbers. It was just, it just, it just wasn't all numbers, which could throw some folks off. It was, here's what you're looking at. You could even identify, ah, this is what the principal is paying. Here's what the teachers cost. Here's what per school. So it sort of made, folks could zoom in. If I've got two kids in kindergarten, I know what that program costs. You know what I mean?
The site base cost budget.
Kind of. Yes.
Okay. That's the one that I studied when I first met you, is to see, all right, what is it costing and what are the allocations for every aspect of, by school? What I'm also hearing is a roll-up of that from a, from a program perspective, is what I'm hearing as well. Yes, we know what, we know what Mount Daniel will cost and how many teachers. Now, what does that break out for in terms of a program? What is our first-grade program cost with these class sizes, et cetera? At the high school, programmatically, we know what the breakouts are and the specifics of the high school budget. But to break it down more so in terms of, this is what certain programs are costing us, with or without staffing, we can do it that way, I'm sure.
Well, the only other thing I would say is I would allocate G and A as well to each of those schools, because I think last year, there was this discussion, if we could give so much more money to the schools if we just got rid of those gold brickers in central office. But I think you need to, you need to allocate, okay, here's your share, George Mason, of the administration and the leadership. So that, I think that, that would give a more full picture of what actually is costing. And, you know, there, there may be five ways to slice and dice it, allocating program costs division-wide, allocating technology costs division-wide.
What, what I'm hearing from the board, I think my takeaway, which I'm very pleased to hear, is that the January 10th is not the proposed budget to you, but rather, it's a dynamic document with the information for us to then work through for a period of time, with the options laying out and the cost factors and associated by priorities that the board has established on its work plan.
Yeah. When you drop it on the table, that's the starting gun.
That's the starting gun. Right. And it's not, you know, and, and then be able to have enough analytic capacity to see what it's costing us sight and across. Something like that, that we, then you can reason over this, and we can try to justify. And then ultimately, you'll get down to some very difficult choices that you'll have to make. What we then present a month or two later, we have plenty of time to talk about with regard to where the lines are drawn, where the needs levels are, where the priorities are, and what you get for what you are able to pay for and what you're not going to be able to get.
So just briefly, in an, in an effort to build further consensus, which our Code of Civility says we're supposed to do, I just wanted to agree with what both Margaret and John said. I would not expect the original budget from the superintendent, to answer your question, Hunter, to come in at the guidance from the city. I think we start with the position of what do we think we need? And then, I think once, the budget that we actually give to the city does need to take into account fiscal realities. So I would say that's a little bit different. But at least in terms of the budget that we get early on, I think we need to, we need to see what the schools need to operate to meet our constitutional obligations.
But I think Mr. Reitinger brings up a point that I've been turning over in my mind, is, is that if our demographic pressures remain more or less where they are, what has to change? And when do we start having that conversation? And when do we start thinking about that? And I don't, you know, if it's not this year, it may be the year after. But I think that conversation may be coming due soon.
And if there are going to be programmatic changes, like for example, at the high school, the program of studies is being worked on right now to say what courses, what things are being offered for our students for the 17th and 18th.
But I mean, but I think some of those, sure, but some of those, for example, high C and Chinese, I mean, another ask is, I would like to hear, I would like, I would like to hear more success stories from the individual buildings, the successful use of high C to solve the Chinese language over enrollment problem. I don't think is a story that's ever been told adequately. And, and so some of this is, you know, hybrid learning may be the last thing you want to throw overboard, or dual enrollment, because they actually provide benefits over and above a richer curriculum. They also ease.
Pressures on.
Pressures on, on hiring and, and costs.
And facilities.
And facilities. So it's, it's complicated, and I don't think you want to act in haste about that, so.
If I could just respond, because I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. The, the only I'd say is, we, we, we may not be just passive consumers of some of that. We may be able to steer some things for the future in terms of, if we are more aggressive, and Dr. Schiller and I spoke briefly about this earlier today, if we're more aggressive, for example, on dual-degree programs or otherwise, do we have a smaller student population that we have to deal with? Because we've actually got kids going to college part of the time, and so we need less classrooms. So we just, I, I think we ought to, we ought to be very directed, and I think the time may have come, not having been on the board when this happened the last time, to do sort of a, you know, a, a more of a, where is education going, schools of the future sort of discussion, to figure out how programmatically things might get steered so that the future appears less bleak.
To augment that point, work that I've been doing around the country for districts and states is rethinking the paradigm of how we have been delivering education, and particularly with limited resources, and, and as importantly, with the direction of our society and technology, and to what extent then, various models such as emphasis on dual enrollment, and rethinking the four years of high school, and thinking more of the continuum of K-16, have tremendous implications on brick-and-mortar requirements. That kind of futurist, futureing, visioning by a school board, you are at a period of time where you can start thinking long, because what you are doing is, is excellent. But how do you reposition for the future? How many of us ever thought that what education would look like today with technology? And the impact of technology, the impact of independent learning, the impact of all these opportunities? these opportunities? And in some states, the impact of choice, the impact of money following the student, has had incredible, 20, 30 years ago, one would never have been thinking about these things. We don't know what the future looks like, but I think this board, being the leader that it is, and individually, you are, it would be a wonderful exercise to be thinking about what if? And what will the future look like? And how do we, as policymakers at this table, want to drive it? May be worth your while this spring, as you're working with, looking, working at determining your candidates, you know, that you have a picture, and you gauge what it is that your future permanent leader believes where the direction of education may be. Because I think that philosophical agreement and comfort level is going to be very critical, as well as the chemistry of the individual, whether she or he is a good fit for your community. But I don't, I do, as I advise boards, the education delivery system that we have today is not going to look like what we will have tomorrow. And we have to be ready for that and position ourselves accordingly.
Well, I think the board would welcome, you know, to the extent that you have food for thought or guidance, please.
I'm not setting myself up for this, but I'm thinking that this, this is extremely, you're a very high-level board of individuals who give a great deal of thought and care for this community. The stewardship of this community is left to you. Not all boards that I've had the privilege of working with, either my boards, or the boards that I've led as the chairman, or the boards that I've worked with in advising, are of your capacity and capability. You have that capacity and capability as a board, individually and collectively, to really rethink and do some ground, hard decision-making. And there are a lot of people out there who are strong futurists, who could help guide you. And to be, I would suggest it'd be a really worthwhile retreat to be able to listen and think through this as an exercise for this board. And I think it dovetails really nicely with your search.
Good idea.
Any other thoughts on the budget? Do you feel, so if this is not, you don't have to give us the final draft on the 10th?
Yeah. That's great.
With respect to...
It'll be the 11th, right?
Well...
Yes. Well, as soon...
I'll get the wand.
That's good. And I'm hopeful, as you're pointing out, and I really appreciate this, this is a working, ongoing document that we are going to put together, argue about, wrangle about, listen to folks. And that is not that, here it is gang, you chop it up and dice it. We're here to serve you and make this really an opportunity to really ask the questions that some people really want to ask. And with that kind of guidance, I think we can now proceed with understanding that we have some physical limitations of what we have in terms of who, what we can churn out. But we'll do whatever you need, and if you need data that we're not giving to you, or that you think of tomorrow you would like, please let us know in formatting.
Yeah, I think the mantra should be, if we're going to fail, let's fail fast and tell, you know, give feedback. If something isn't working, let's make that clear so that we don't...
That's right.
Have lost opportunities to do the pivots. So, all right, well?
Thank you. Thank you. Very helpful for me and your staff.
Yes. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the civility code. Mr. Lawrence pointed, oh, sorry, Mr. Webb.
So I have a quick question of, Mr. Chairman, for you. Am I, are these at 10 after 10? Are these must-do tonight, if, um, things?
Well, at least the legislative agenda, for Lila's sake, because next week is the legislative breakfast, and we could at least pass that. But that had one tiny tweak from when we first saw it.
Yeah, so it'd be a brief...
Yeah, she just wanted it passed before the legislative breakfast next week in Arlington. Other than that...
We can rule, let's do that then.
Well, let's, let me tell you, it is, it is 10 after, it's 11 after 10. I don't anticipate that we're going to be here till, for another hour. I think we can knock this out.
Do you ever anticipate we're going to be here?
I, I, I think we can finish our work this evening by half past.
I have packed up my things.
I think we can. All right. Let's do it.
Yes, we can.
Good night, Mr. Ben.
All right. So the code of civility, Mr. Lawrence pointed out that the code of civility had languished. He was presiding over that when I was sick or traveling or something, so I'll kick it over to you.
I heard no responses from anyone, so hopefully there are no huge objections. And I think I captured everything that we had. The only thing that I suggested change, and we hadn't talked about, was changing it to code of civility and community engagement. Other than that, I mean, this is, this is the clean copy. You had the marked-up one that had all the comments in it, so I guess if there are any questions or concerns, let me know. But I didn't hear back from anybody, so hopefully I got most of it right.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any comments on the code of civility. It looked to me like it captured things properly. My only question is, do we vote it in? Or my, I have a vague recollection that it was, we, there was just a bunch of signatures and all the board members signed it. But if we need to pass it...
Yeah, no, I think...
I'm certainly willing to proceed in that vein.
I think it is, I think generating a signature copy is all that needs to be done. Our signature will be our approval.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the past, we didn't vote simply because it was the same thing every single year. So it was presented by the chair, and then people signed. I think since we're changing it, we should vote to change it, especially since this would be the thing that would go to all the advisory committees as well to let them. So, I mean, I just think procedurally, we should say, this is a change we want to do. And then after that, I don't, if we don't change it, I don't think we need to vote every year.
So, all of the advisory committees have signed the original one already?
Oh, they have.
They have. They have. But we can bring it back and have them sign again, because we were, we were told, instructed to do it at the first meeting of the year. So we use what you had from last year.
Right. And that's where we fell through, because we had the work session early enough, and then it just got forgotten, to be honest.
Okay. But we can bring it again. I just want you to know that they have signed, so you may hear why we're being asked to do this again, but I'll...
Well, and I guess the question, does anybody feel strongly that they'd sign a new one? It could be that we'd start again next fall. We signed this one, and we don't have to apologize to them for being dumb.
I would say that.
Unanimous consent. Okay.
I guess my only question is, with these changes, does repurposing this for the advisory committees take a whole lot of tweaking?
No, I mean, I think that, when you tweaked it for the, it's just taking out things like, you know, as a member of the school board, anything that's school board-related would get changed to be more generic, but, I mean, the tweaks would take two minutes. It's more, do we want to, you know, in December, and most likely for January, ask people to re-sign something for the next five months? I don't see any reason to. I mean, kind of insulting to a certain extent. But I think we should do it, sign it, and then next fall, just have it ready for them to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I would seek unanimous consent then to approve the code of civility. I think we could generate a signature copy that we can execute next meeting?
Yeah.
Or unless we can generate one now...
Oh, I mean...
But anyway.
I actually promised Marty that there might be tweaks, so she didn't have to have one prepared today.
All right. Very well.
So, don't make me a liar.
True. What is that scraping out there?
It's the trash.
I'm sorry.
Oh, oh.
It sounds like a snowplow, and I'm thinking, goodness.
I was leaving this morning when I walked out the door to get in my car to go to work. I was like, not ready for this just yet.
So, the next item on my frozen, okay, next is the legislative agenda. All right, the legislative agenda is one of the things that we need to get cracking on, because we're heading into that. Mr. Lawrence alluded to it. I would entertain a motion to adopt it. It has been tweaked based on prior meetings.
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? All right.
Yes.
Next, we come to a proclamation on inclusion. We have had a draft statement of proclamation on diversity and inclusion that Mr. Reiting thoughtfully drafted, for which I thank him. I believe that was done in consultation with some board members, consistent with the FOIA and open meeting laws. I would ask if there's any discussion, or if there is a desire simply to, we have a copy here that could be executed now. If there's a motion to approve this, we could, we could execute that now, and I could get us out of here well before 10:30, Mr. Webb. So moved.
So moved, or...
Okay, do I have a...
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma and Mr. Webb, seconding. Why don't we call the role on this, Mr. ...
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reiting?